Hello everybody, we're back for accounting. And... As you can see by the time below, 11:55pm, this is gonna go on for awhile. Oh no. Okay. Therefore, this is gonna be review for your final exam. If you are in this class, you know exactly what we're doing. If you're not in this class, welcome aboard. I hope you learn a lot. Because that's the goal, right? We all wanna get smarter, right? Erase all ink. So first things first, we have to cover inventory and cost of goods sold. So how do we do that? Well, to do this, we need to talk about the inventory costing methods. The inventory costing methods are specific identification, first in, first out, last in, first out, and weighted average. So, I'm going to show you all now the examples on how to actually calculate this. So, let's actually pick a different color. Let's use a... Let's use green. Yeah, it's visible. Okay. So... Inventory costing methods. First, we have first in, first out. For example, let's say we have a box here that says "May 6th" for $95 cost. And then we have another box that says "May 5th" and it will be a $75 cost. And then we have a third box that says[188.79][190.08]"May 3rd" and it has a $70, it has a $70 cost. Okay. So, on the income statement, we'll need to put some numbers. Specifically, we'll need to put net sales, we need to put cost of goods sold, and we need gross profit. And these numbers will come from first in, so May 3rd and May 5th were first. So, it'll be 75 plus 70 will equal 145. And then the total cost. The net sales, and the net sales are going to be given to us, and the question is going to be $250. Therefore, on the gross profit, this will equal $105. Now regarding the balance sheet, which is a completely different sheet altogether, we need to have the inventory. Well, our inventory is what we have left, the last in. And that's going to be $95. Now let's do this with last in, first out. So we have the exact same numbers. And when it's last in, first out, we have to look at the income statement. The income statement will say, like before, net sales, cost of goods sold, and gross profit. The net sales are 250, this will just be a given number in the question. Cost of goods sold will actually come from the last in, so we have May 6th and May 5th. Going all the way down here, being 95 and 75 together, that will equal 170. We then subtract from here, and that leaves us with $80. Then on the balance sheet, on the balance sheet, we're going to have inventory again. And the inventory will be from the first in. And the first in has a 70 cost. Now, we look at the following numbers for weighted average. Now weighted average will require summations. It's the same numbers again. So here's our boxes. And to do this, we need to take the sum. So we have to get 95 plus 75 plus 70, and this will equal to 140, 240, my apologies. This will equal to 240. But since there's three of them, we'll do 240 divided by 3, and that'll equal to $80 per unit. So now that we know that, we can begin the math. And now I'm getting messages. Anyways, back to work. Hold on, I'm getting a message from somebody. I guess not. Okay, back to work. The... This summation here. Oh, it's on eraser mode. Will be 240 divided by 3, which will equal $80 per unit. And here is where we write the new income statement and balance sheet. Okay. So the new one will be income statement. And it will say net sales, cost of goods sold, and gross profit. And we know from before that the net sales is 250, this is just a given. And then cost of goods sold, since it only takes from two of them, for some reason, it'll be 160, because 80 times 2 is 160. So we subtract here, and we get $90 as our gross profit. For the balance sheet, we end up with $80. Yes, this is what's still here, this is our inventory. Cool. Now that I've explained this system to all of you, let's do some practice problems. Let me open up notepad, so that we can write them down. So on the notepad, we have the following question. Scraper supplies tracks the number of units purchased and sold throughout each accounting period, but applies its inventory costing method at the end of each period, as if it uses a periodic inventory system. Assume its accounting records provided the following information at the end of the annual accounting period, December 31st. Transactions, unit, cost. It'll all say it here. Beginning inventory, 30, 200 units and $30. I know it's not perfectly lined up, but it's as good as it's gonna get. Tip: Although the purchases and sales are listed in chronological order, Scrappers determine the cost of goods sold after the purchases have occurred. Okay. So this is what's required. Beginning with A, we need to compute last in, first out. Therefore, we have to make the table. Okay, the table will be for last in, first out, and it'll be periodic. So... First, we're going to put the ones that'll be on every single table. So we have a beginning inventory. Then we have purchases. Then we have March 2nd. Then we have June 30th. Then we have total purchases. And then afterwards, we have goods available for sale. For sale. And now that we've done that, let's go on to the ones that'll only appear depending on which one we're doing. Those will be cost of goods sold. And then we will have units from beginning inventory. Then we'll have units from March 2 purchase. That was bad. March 2nd purchase. And then we have units from June 30th purchase. And then afterwards, we have total cost of goods sold. And then below even that one, what else do we have? We have to put the ending inventory. Ending inventory. Okay. So what exactly are we calculating? We're calculating units. And we're calculating cost per unit. And then we're calculating total. Okay. So, as I've stated before, normally, I would do this on an Excel sheet, because I don't hate myself. However, the exam will be freehand, meaning it's on paper. I don't know why, but it is. So first, let's look at all the money, all the money. All of the information that exists within this paper. So we look at the, at this thing again. We know that beginning inventory is 200 units with a cost per unit of $30. This will give us a total of $6,000. So now we have to go through purchases. So the purchases are going to be purchased on account on March 2nd, being $300 for 32, $300 units for $32. And then the other one will be 250 units for $36. Therefore, on March 2nd, we have to put 300 units for $32. And I think that for simplicity sake, I'm gonna write a line to every single one. Maybe get a dotted line, so it's even easier to track. $32, and... I'll calculate this afterwards. Then June 30th will give us one of $250 times $36. So now we need the total purchased, okay? Here's how we calculate total purchased. If we look at the question, it'll be a summation of these two. So, in other words, 300 plus 250 will equal 550 units. And these 550 units for total purchases will be added to the 200 for goods available for sale. 550 plus 200 equals 750. And to make things simpler, if we take the sum of this plus the other two, which will equal to 9,600 and 9,000 respectively, this will equal 18,600 plus 6,000 will equal 24,600. Which, I think makes a lot of sense. So now we've have these calculations, these are the permanent calculations for this question. We don't want to do this over and over again. Now we get to the cost of goods sold. So first, we need to calculate the units from March 2nd purchases, because we're doing last in, first out. We want to start, we want to start from the bottom. Should be the June 30th purchases. So the June 30th purchases states that we have 250 on June 30th. 250. So let's add that to the summation. And just so you know, according to this problem, we can get a total of 400, because 350 plus 50 equals 400. So 250 start here. So June 30th purchase will equal to 250. And this 250 is sold at $36. 250 times 36, actually, I'll just do the calculation for both afterwards. So now that we have that, we need to take whatever's left of from March 2nd. So we know on March 2nd that we have 2, 300. 300. But we can't go above 400. So we just take half, we only take 150. Because 150 plus 250 equals 400. We multiply this by $32. And now, for total cost of goods sold, we take these two, and we'll get 400 units. And these 400 units, when you look at the number here, will give us a total of 13,800. We get this number by doing 150 times 32 plus 250 times 36. That'll be here. And that's the total cost of goods sold for 400 units. So now we need the ending inventory. The ending inventory will be 750 minus 400, being 350. And then for here, the ending inventory in terms of total will be 2,000, 2,000, will be 24,600 minus 13,800, which will leave us with 10,800. And that's how you'll do it for LIFO. Pretty simple, and it's good. So now, this will be done for uh, FIFO. Because it saves us time in terms of rewriting it. So we're gonna skip B and do C. Because weighted average cost and specific identification is a bit different, so we'll do FIFO next. Okay. First in, first out. And thankfully, the calculations down here are the only things we have to erase. Because while these numbers stay mostly the same, they are slightly different. So let's get to work. You know what? I'll make things even easier. Let's put a nice bright green in between each line. Just to separate and make it easier to visualize what's going on. There we go. Therefore, when we're doing first in, first out, we start from top to bottom. So we know on the top that beginning inventory has 200 units. And that these 200 units are sold for 30, thanks to the above. This gives us 6,000. And then from here, we need 200 units, which we definitely have. Which is going to be sold for 32, meaning 6,400. The sum of this, well, the sum of these two together. And I just realized I made a mistake. Hey, you guys got to catch me on this, okay? If you don't catch me on this, we make a mistake, and we get minus points on midterm, not even midterm, on final exam. And you don't want to miss points on final exam. 6, 4, 0, 0. It actually should be up here. Good. So here, it'll be 400, because 200 plus 200 equals 400. And then these two will give us 12,400. Good. So now, to get the ending inventory, we do 400 minus 750, which is going to be equal to 350. And then we'll do 24,600 minus 12,400, and it'll give us 12,200. Good. That's how you'll do it for FIFO. First in, first out. But now, we have to do it for D. Now again, I want to do the weighted average one last, simply because that one's a bit different to the other ones. So now we need to do specific targeting. Now thankfully, as I stated, this above section stays the same on all of them. It makes checking all of these out much easier. So this will be specific identification. I love doing that. This will be specific And this will be periodic as well. Looking at this, what can we tell? Not much for now. But specific identification says, assume that the April 1st sale was selected 1/5 from the beginning inventory. So what does that mean exactly? So that 1/5 in beginning inventory is actually from the 200, I believe. Not the 200, from the... Actually, no, it is a 200, it's actually from the, from a different number. From the 300, I believe. 350? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I need to think, I need to think. So... The first one is 350 units sold. Oh, that's from the April 1st, okay, so April 1st says 350 sold. So down here, first sell, 350. Uh, where will I put that? 350 times 350 times 1/5 will equal 70. And these are sold at $30. Then we have purchase on March 2nd, be 300. Okay? Actually, no. No, 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 think, think, think. Okay. 4 fifths from March 2nd. So the March 2nd one is 300. Isn't it? Isn't it? Actually, no. It isn't. Unit sold is 350, no matter what. Therefore, it'll be 350 times 4 over 5. Yeah, 350 times 4 over 5, and that'll give us 280, being sold for 32. And then units from June 30th purchases. June 30th, assumed the sale of August 1st was selected from the purchase of June 30th. So June 30th is 250. Okay. So in other words, whatever is left. So 700 plus 280 equals 350. But the total sales is 400. So 400 minus 350 will leave us with 50. And these will be sold for 36. Yes, 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 okay. That's correct. So what does this mean? Well, like before, this is 400. And then the math here, using your calculator, so this times this, plus this times this, plus this times this, will give us And thankfully, 24,600 minus 2,860 will be equal to 11,740. And then here, 750 minus 400 is equal to 350. Good. Good, 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 good. Awesome. And if you take the sum of 200, 130, and 20, that's 350 left. Good. But now, now let's make this easier on us. Now we're gonna do B. I just showed you one C and D, because it didn't require me to change the bottom section. But now I must. Now I must. Total goods available for sale stays the same. Cost of goods sold stays the same. But then these bottom three must leave. And then we keep ending inventory. See, this is why we write in cursive, so that we can just easily remove everything. We're gonna move ending inventory up a little bit. Uh, cost of goods sold, and then ending inventory. So we'll fix this bottom part. Because now this is even easier to do. Oh crap. Do-dum. Okay. So now that we fixed it here, let's look at the answer. Weighted average cost. So to do the weighted average cost, we have to take all of the costs. So all the units together cost 24,600. And there are... And when you take all the, some, some, actually, we're not even doing that, not, we're not doing that. Instead, let's take the sum of the costs. So we'll do 30 plus 32 plus 36, and this will equal 98. 98 divided by 3 will give us 32.8. I think that's what it gives us. No. No, 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 no. That's wrong. Let's, let's do this the correct way. The correct way of calculating this would be the total cost, so 24,600 divided by the number of items, so it'll be 750. If we do this number correctly, this should give us uh 32.8. Yeah, this will give us 32.8. When you plug that into a calculator. So now that we have 32.8, we realize a cost, that our cost of goods sold, we're selling 400 units. And for these 400 units, we're selling them at 32.8. And this will give us, with our calculator, 750 minus 400 will equal 350, and that's our ending inventory for units. And then for ending inventory on total money, it'll be this minus this, and this will give us 11,480 dollars. That's how you'll do it for weighted average cost. This is not the correct name. Weighted average cost. Cool. Now that we've done that, we have to check again. Because now we have to do part 2 of the question. Of the 4 methods, which one will give us the highest profit, I believe? Of the 4 methods will result in the highest profit, okay, highest growth profit, okay. So method A, B, C, and D left us with the following profits. And those are 10,800. B left us with 11,480. C left us with 12,000. Why does it do that? 200. And D has left us with 11,740. So if we're looking for the highest profit, C, which is uh first in, first out, is the correct answer. All right, to do that, I have to... Ah, damn it. That's the hardest part about writing with this thing. Is the inability to get it to stop. I know, it looks like I'm just doing random schmush with it, but that's how it works. Okay. There we go. Whatever. Then we have the next one, which will result in the lowest income taxes. So the lowest income taxes is the one given to us by the lowest income. Therefore, lowest income will be last in, first out. So this will be a lowest income tax, and this will be highest gross profit. That was question 1. Yep, that was question 1. Can you believe this? How long was that? How long was that? That was 35 minutes. Okay. Now let's go to question 2. There are 12 questions on this exam. There are 12 questions on this exam. Wait a minute, we have 70 minutes, I think. How are we gonna do this in 20? Good question. Well, maybe if I'm not explaining it, it's probably easier, right? Probably. Okay. So now, we go to the next question. That being this. Woo-hoo. Smart Company prepared its annual financial statements dated December 31st. The company reported its inventory using the FIFO inventory costing method and failed to evaluate its net realizable value at December 31st. The preliminary income statement follows. Here it is. Can you read it? Good. Very good. Uh, actually, for the sake of legibility, I'll separate them more effectively. So it turns out that these ones here all go together. Like so. Then this one will actually go with it as well. And then starting here, it spaces out. And I think that's a good place to space it. I think that's correct distancing. 12,000 will be, I mean, 11,200 will be here. 61K and 51K also move over. Same goes for this one. Good. For the sake of simplicity, I just want to point out that we want to align the we want to align the zeros, not the other way around. The 15,000 stays here. And the net income is also down here. Okay, so that's how we'll represent this income statement. Uh, this will be a debit credit, I believe. And then we have the net realizable. So assume you have been asked to restate the financial statement in a corporate, develop the following data related to the ending inventory. Okay, okay. So first things first, we have to move these to the net realizable. Okay, so quantity is correct. Price per unit. Oh wow, price per unit just decided to be down here, why? Where did price go? Oh, it says purchase cost per unit and total. Purchase cost per unit and purchase cost total. So I just need to make this bigger. Okay, so this per unit, per total must work together. Not that far. There we go. So net realizable cost will be moving over here. Good. I know that I don't typically do this on camera, but uh this time around, I want to make sure that everything is legible. Why does it do that? Is it gonna do that for all of them? Please don't tell me that it's gonna do that for all of them. It is. How sad. I mean, it's fine. I just wish it didn't do that. Okay. And it's probably gonna do it for this one as well. Come on, show me the money, there it is. And then over here, per unit, it'll be $3 per unit. Close enough. 2. And that's the quantity. Good enough. Why does it do that? Okay. Tip: Inventory write-downs do not affect the cost of goods available for sale. Instead, the effects of write-down is to reduce ending inventory, which increases cost of goods sold and then affects other amounts of income statement. Required: Restate the income statement to reflect LC/NRV valuation at the ending inventory. Apply LC/NRV on item-by-item basis, comparing, explain how LC/NRV affect on each amount in the income statement that was changed in requirement 1. Okay. Okay. So first, things first. We need to do some math. And the best way to do some math is by looking at the numbers, right? So item, original unit cost, net reali-, net realizable per unit. And then it'll be NRV per unit. And then we multiply it by the quantity. And then we will do the evaluation. So first, we actually have to take the valuation. Because this is gonna be what takes forever. And I think that comes from above here as well. Yeah, here is, there's a revenue statement, right? Well, actually... Yeah, so this is what we want, that we will create using these numbers instead. So let's get to work. And that'll be item. That'll be A, B, C, D. Original unit cost. And that'll be $3, $4, $2, $5. Then we need net realizable value per unit. And that'll be $4, $2, $4, and $2. And I'm getting those numbers from here. 3, 4, 2, 5, 4, 2, 4, 2. Here they are, here they are. Then we need LC/M/NRV mean, NRV per unit. And that'll be... What does it say? Net, I mean, LCM? Wait, where did I find that number? Oh, right, it's the lowest cost. So 3 and 4, 3 is lower. 4 and 2, 2 is lower. Uh, 4 and 2, 2 is lower, and then 5 and 2, 2 is lower. So that'll be 3, 2, 2, 2, 2. And then we'll multiply it by quantity. And the quantity will be given here, and it'll be uh 3K, 15K, 1.5K, 7K, and 3K. So once more, it'll be 3K, 1.5K, 7K, and 3K. Good. Very good. So now we need the valuation. LCM/NRV valuation. And that'll be the multiplication. So here, it's going to be $9,000. 2 times 15, it'll be $3,000. $14,000. And $6,000. And the total will be LCM inventory valuation will be equal to the sum of this, which is $32,000. And now we need to do an income tax expense real calculator. An income tax expense will be calculated using the following number. Wait a minute, where do I get the income tax expense from? Do I even need it? Yeah, I need the income tax expense. Okay, so the income tax expense is equal to... Wait a minute, where do I get that? Uh, 3K? Plus 7K is a 10K. Plus uh 45, it'll be 1450? Wait. Because I'm, I'm just gonna point out that, oh, income tax expense is 30%, okay, okay. So that's where that number comes from. But where does the, where does the 39,000 come from? I need to check. Times 30. Wait a minute, where's 39K come from? Um... Huh. That's interesting. That's very interesting. Is the 39K, what happens if you add them all with a bigger number? Trying to see. So if I make it for, it'd be 12K. Because I need to calculate income tax expense. So income tax expense just so you guys know, is equal to 39,000 dollars times 0.3. And that'll give us 11,700. But my question is, where does the 39,000 come from? Oh, it's income from operations. What am I doing? What am I doing? Okay. My apologies. So now that we've gotten this section done up here, let's move on to the really fun stuff. And by the really fun stuff, I mean making the table. I just needed these numbers known by all of you so that when we get to the real calculations, it becomes child's play. So I'm assuming you've written all these down. Let's begin by writing an income statement for Smart Company. Self-managed automatic reporting technology company. And the income statement will require a lot of information. And this will be for LCM/NRV basis. Yeah, maybe I need a darker color, I was purple look. I think that'll be better. Okay. So now that we have that, let's start with sales revenue. So sales revenue that is not how you spell revenue. Will be equal to... Let me check the numbers again. 280,000. And just so we have this simple here, we're going to have a left side and a right side. So it'll be 280,000 dollars. And then we need to do a cost of goods sold, which is a total of beginning inventory and purchases. And these will be thirty thousand and eighteen thousand... A hundred and eighty-two thousand. Where am I getting those numbers from? From the question up here. Now we need the goods available for sale. Goods available for sale, thankfully, stay the same as well. Available for sale will be equal to two hundred and twelve thousand. Okay. And then we have the ending inventory. And this is what we just spent all this time calculating. Will be equal to thirty-two thousand dollars. Great. So now let's continue by having cost of goods sold be another metric. And this will be two hundred and eighty thousand minus this number here. If you take all the submission, you'll end up with a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, that's the sum of this. Hundred and eighty thousand dollars minus two hundred and eighty thousand dollars gives us a hundred thousand dollars. And this number here is going to be gross profit. Okay. So, gross profit needs to be stopped with the operating expenses. So, operating expenses. Operating expenses are shown to us here to be sixty-one thousand dollars. And that'll leave us with thirty-nine thousand dollars for income from operation. And then afterwards, we need to do income tax expense. Income tax expense is calculated to be thirty percent in the question. Where did I find thirty percent? I know it's here. Income tax expense, thirty percent, great. So we need to get thirty percent of thirty-nine thousand. And we know that the answer to this is going to be eleven thousand seven hundred dollar. Good. So now we subtract these two from each other. And we'll get the net income. That being twenty-seven thousand three hundred. Okay. That's how we do part one. I know, so much calculation already. But, in the end, it has to be this way. Now, the question really comes down to... How do we justify this? Net value per uni- per unit is total cost and net value realization. Yeah, that's how it has to be. Good. Good, 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 good. So now we have to do part B. And part B requires us to, let's see. Compare and explain the LCM/NRV effect on each amount in the income statement that was changed in requirement one. Holy shit. Okay. You know what? Let's do it. I highly doubt that part of B is gonna be on the exam. But I'm gonna do it so that no one can say that I didn't help them for the exam. So part B looks kinda like this. Item changed. First in, first out. Cost basis. LCM slash NRV basis. No, let's change it, because it looks like a retarded B. Basis. And then amount of increase which could be decrease. Apparently, the effects of studying this late are getting to me. And don't worry, we'll be going over all of these questions very, very quickly uh, tomorrow as well. Except, we won't be doing review, we'll just be doing questions, and we'll try to speedrun it. So we have ending inventory. We have cost of goods sold. We have gross profit. We have income from operation. We then have income tax expense. We then have net income. It's very hot right now. I don't know why it's very hot right now, but let's, let's keep going. So now we need to have the basis. In other words, we're going to be comparing numbers from the original function to the old one. So, all of the old numbers will stay the same. Okay? So if we just look at, say, the original ending inventory, which are going to be visible here, and take a note of these numbers, because we're gonna fill them in. And the inventory for the FIFO basis is going to be forty-four thousand. For cost of goods sold, it was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand? Wait a minute, yeah, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Gross profit was a hundred and twelve thousand. Income from operation will be fifty-one thousand. And then we have income tax expense, which is a fifteen thousand three hundred. And then, net income will be thirty-five thousand seven hundred. Alright, now let's do it with LCM. So I hope you actually wrote down the numbers we put on the table, because I'm just gonna write them from from looking at the notes. Because I... When I erase something, you can't see it anymore, but I, I know what I wrote. So we'll have thirty-two thousand after calculation. Cost of goods sold was a hundred and eighty thousand. Good. Uh, gross profit was a hundred thousand. Income from operations was thirty-nine thousand. Income tax expense was eleven thousand seven hundred. And then, net income was twenty-seven thousand three hundred. So now, we need to look at the amount of increase slash decrease. So we'll take this number minus this number. Forty-four thousand minus thirty-two thousand results in a decrease of twelve thousand. And now that you've seen how I do that, a hundred and sixty-eight minus a hundred and eighty, I mean... Minus X equals a hundred and eighty. So in reality, it's a plus twelve thousand. And I think you see the logic here, let me just fill it in. Then income from operations will be twenty-five thousand negative. Then income tax expense is gonna be another negative number, being negative three thousand six hundred. And then finally, this number here also shrank, so it'll be negative eight thousand four hundred. And that's how you do part B. Congratulations, we did two! Sorry. And that's how you do part B. Congratulations, we did two questions! Why did my headset go flying off my head? I don't even know. Okay. Good. Good, 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 good. Such crazy long problems, don't you think? I think so. But maybe... Maybe the professor will have mercy on us. So now we need to go over some other topics, specifically receivables, bad debt expense, and interest revenue. So, to do that, we need to talk about accounts receivable and bad debts. And this will be the conclusion to it. Although, the book hasn't written as concluded. Okay. So, to give an example, let's say we have a January first. And this will be a recorded sales on account. Wow, the the nighttime is getting to me. And then it'll be record estimate of bad debts. And that'll lead us to January thirty-first. Let's make the line. And then this is where things get interesting. The DR, so the debit, will be to accounts receivable. And the credit will be to sales rev. So here, the debit will be to bad debt expense. And this will be plus E comma SE, minus SE minus SE. Let's write that more clearly, that's not neat. If it's not neat, you can't really look at it. So it'll be plus E minus SE. And then we're going to credit allowance for doubtful accounts. And that'll be plus X A comma minus A. So, at the end, we know what the bad debt is, bad debt known. Bad debt known. And the bad debt known will give us the following. Let's write it over here. The debit will be for allowance for doubtful accounts. And the credit will be for accounts receivable. And then we have the balance sheet. Balance sheet will be for cash accounts receivable less allowance for doubtful accounts. And allowance receivable comma net. And then inventory. And then, three ellipses. So what does that really mean? Well, thank you for asking. What? Thank you for asking, okay. Well, thank you for asking. That's exactly what we're gonna answer right now. Let's make the thing thicker. Five. Perfect. So we need methods for estimating bad debt. And there are two acceptable methods of estimating the bad debts in a given period. And that would be method one, percentage of credit sales method. And the other one will be aging accounts receivable. Now, both of them have their pluses and minuses. Two is more accurate. And then one is simpler to apply. So there are two questions that we can solve for this one. Oh my goodness, there are two questions to solve, unbelievable. Actually, you know what? I'll do the two-question follow-up in the next video. It's getting late, and I need to wake up early tomorrow, so uh, have a nice day. We'll just jump straight into the questions, starting tomorrow. Or I might just make them, this one giant video, who knows? Anyways, uh, have a nice day, I'll see you very soon. We're back! Let's get into the questions. Alright. So the question here, let's, uh, get everything selected, so that it's even easier. I don't know why this happens sometimes, but you know, you gotta get it done. Callaway Golf Company sells on account to Golf Pro Shops and general sporting goods retailers. In its financial statements for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, Callaway reported the following balances and changes in the allowance for doubtful accounts in thousands. Beginning at beginning of period, charged to bad debt expense, amounts written off, balance at end of period. Okay, so that should be a bit larger. Yeah, balance at end of period. Like that. And to write those out, let's do some spacing. Because we gotta do, right, we gotta do some spacing. Because end of period is one of them. Okay, it's that one. Here, balance at beginning of period is another one. You need to go to bad debt expense. And then this number needs to go back. I don't know why all these numbers seem to be connected to each other via rubber band, but that's how they are. And required to create a T-account for the allowance of doubtful accounts entered into the amount above schedule. Okay. So first, we gotta create the T-account. Let's do it. So to do that, we need to have allowance for doubtful accounts. Alright. So to do this, we need to do a T account. So the T will be the debt and the credit. As follows. And so we have beginning balance. And we have write-offs. And we have the ending balance at the bottom. So over on this side, we have bad debt expense. Let's fix that. So to do this, our beginning balance has to be determined if it is a debit or credit. Thankfully, we know that it is a credit. And to check, beginning balance is forty-four thousand five hundred. I mean, four thousand four hundred and fifty. Good. And then our write-off, amounts written off will be eleven hundred. Apparently, still lost my ability to write, even though it's been a while. Weird. And then we need to do the bad debt expenses. So if we look at our table again, bad debt expense will be two thousand two hundred and sixty. So, we take this number, eleven hundred, and we subtract it from the sum of these two. So we do four, four, five, zero, plus two, two, six, zero. That should be a zero and not a six. Minus one, one, zero, zero. And for the ending balance, it'll be five thousand six hundred and ten. Good. So what's the next one? Record summary journal entries to A estimating bad debt expense and write-offs of specific balances during the year. Okay. So what this is asking us to do is put it in a formula for the T account equation. So, the T account equation in equation format will be beginning balance plus bad debt expense minus write-off is equal to ending balance. Erase, there we go. Good. So to write this down, it'll be beginning balance is equal to four thousand four hundred and fifty plus the bad debt expense, which is two thousand two hundred and sixty minus one thousand one hundred equaling to five thousand six hundred and ten. And next, it wants us to record the summary journal entries related to estimating bad debt expense and write-offs of specific balances during the year. So in other words, we have two transactions to record, A and B. And to do that, let's use a better way of writing it out. So it'll be transaction general journal. Then we'll do debit and credit. Okay. So transaction A will be bad debt expense over allowance for doubtful accounts. And that'll give us, uh, for debit, we'll debit two thousand two hundred and sixty, and we'll credit two thousand two hundred and sixty. And for transaction B, we have allowance for doubtful accounts. And we will have accounts receivable. Here. And this will be one thousand a hundred, and this will be a thousand one hundred. And that's how you'll do part B of the journal entries. And now we must answer the question, if Callaway had written off an additional hundred thousand of accounts receivable during the period, by how much would net receivables have been decreased? How much would net income have been increased? Well, so in other words, it's asking us if it was written off in another hundred, another another one thousand. So in other words, it's asking for four, four, five, zero, two, two, six, zero, one hu- an additional hundred thousand of accounts receivable. Amount written off was a hundred thousand. So, in other words, it would be twelve hundred and five, six, one, zero. When you do the calculations, when you write your calculations, the question is, how much would it change? Well, truthfully, your ending balance would be different by a hundred. So in other words, end bow would equal five thousand one, five hundred and ten, as opposed to five thousand six hundred and ten. But when looking at your net receivables and net income, these are not changed at all. So they stay at zero. So that's that question. Now we gotta go to the next question. And the next question is this one. Oh, it's a static question. Cool. This will be easy then. Mattel Incorporated, the Has- and Hasbro are two of the largest and most successful toy makers in the world. In terms of their products they sell and their receivables management practices. To evaluate their ability to collect on credit sales, consider the following information reported in their annual reports. Okay. Number one, calculate the receivable turnover ratio and days to collect for Mattel and Hasbro for eighteen hun- for twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen. In your calculations, use average accounts receivable net allowance. Uh, to A, which of the companies was quicker to convert its receivables into cash? And which of companies was quicker to convert its receivables into cash in two thousand and seventeen? So in other words, it's twenty seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. So let's begin the calculations. And to do this, we have to create a table. The table will have the following information. Twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen. And these will be divided into two sections. And these two will be called Mattel and Hasbro. Mattel Hasbro. And then we need to actually calculate, talk about what we're doing. So we need to write about the receivable turnover ratio. And the days to collect. Perfect. So this can be formatted rather easily. Like so. So now that we have this, let's do some math, shall we? First, we need to know the formulas. The receivable turnover ratio is equal to net sales divided by average net receivables. And then the days to collect formula will equal to three hundred and sixty-five divided by receivables turnover. Now that we know this, let's begin the calculation for Mattel of two thousand and eighteen. So we know that, I need to fix this table. Okay, okay. That's probably the hardest part, and is making sure that every table fits. Okay? Almost. That works for Hasbro. You know what? Let's just have Hasbro spaced until it hits twenty seventeen as well. Like that. And then the following numbers will be spaced out in accordance to the year. There we go. What? There we go. Why does it do that? I don't know. It's a bit weird, but spacing is important for the sake of legibility. Because if you can't read the table, then you have a different problem altogether. It's still a huge one. So it is worth looking into. Okay, that almost fits. Off by one, off by two, three, by two, off by that. And then these numbers here, close enough. Um, something happened. Why are they not spaced correctly? Oh, this twenty should be here as well. Okay. That one spaced correctly. Wow, these were mostly spaced correctly. And then these ones need to go back by, you need to go forward one, you need to stay. This one needs to go back by two, three, three. And there we go. So required, calculate the receivables turnover ratio and days to collect for Mattel and Hasbro. Okay. So as you can see, the numbers we're looking at will be the net sales. So for the net sales of two thousand and eighteen, Mattel is four thousand five hundred and ten. And the average net receivables will be nine hundred and seventy minus the previous number, which will be eleven thirty. So it looks like this. Nine seventy minus eleven thirty. But then we divide it by two, because we're doing an average. And when you take this number here, you'll go to receivable turnover ratio, and that'll give you, I mean, yeah, receivable turnover ratio, and that'll give you four point three days. She's a better color. She's nice red. Four point three days. Then, we gotta have the days of collect. So the days to collect will be three hundred and sixty-five for receivable turnover divided by four point three. And this number here will give us eighty-four point nine days. So now that you know the formula, let's do the other ones much more quickly. Good. I hope this is starting to make sense, because this is gonna be on your exam. Equal and equal. So, for this one here, we need to check the numbers again. And it'll be, these number here for two thousand and seventeen, Mattel will be forty-four, I mean forty-eight hundred eighty, four, eight, eight, zero, divided by average net receivables. So we look at this, net receivables, so account receivable net of allowance, be eleven thirty minus eleven fifteen. And then we divide this by two. We take that number, and it gives us four point three days again. Cool. Then we take this number, and because it's the same number, this will be once more eight point four point nine. Because if we have this number, and we put it in the same exact formula, it'll be eighty-four point nine. If you put eight point five or eight point four, the, I mean eighty-four point five or eighty-four point four, on the homework, if you did it like that, the computer will also mark it as correct. Because your ratio is close enough. Anyways. Anyways. Now we go to Hasbro. And Hasbro is a bit different. Looking at Hasbro, it's asking for two thousand and eighteen, so it'd be four, five, eight, zero divided by eleven ninety minus fourteen oh five divided by two. And when you plug that into a calculator, it'll give you three point five. Wait. Wait, is that correct? Yes, it's correct. Now, why is it not negative? Well, that is a good question, actually. I don't know why it's not negative. Weird. But it's not. I'll have to get back to all of you on that one. Oh, my apologies. Um, now I know why. So all of this time, this should have been a plus. I've been plugging it in to the calculator with the plus sign. I think I just messed that up. That's what's going on. So now that I've done that, we have to go to receivable turnover. So now that I've done that, we have to go to receivable turnover. So it'll be three hundred and sixty-five. Divided by three point five. And that will give us a hundred and three point four. Very cool. And now we need to do the final calculation. Which will be the two thousand and seventeen Hasbro. So five thousand two hundred and ten. Divided by. Fourteen oh five. Plus. Thirteen twenty. Divided by two. And this will give us three point eight. Days. So then for days to collect, we'll do three, six, five. Divided by three point eight. And this should give us ninety-five point five. Days. Okay. So that was simple. But now we have to do the following question. Which of the companies was quicker to convert receivables into cash in twenty eighteen? Well. Days to collect. Eighty-four. Versus Hasbro, a hundred and three. Therefore, Mattel was faster. And then. Look at the next one. Which of the companies was quicker to receive those cash in twenty seventeen? So eighty-four compared to ninety-five, Mattel was faster again. That's these two. In both cases, Mattel is faster. Okay. So those are the example questions to do. The next topic we're gonna be going over is long-lived. Tangible. And. Intangible. Assets. Okay. In other words, we need to go over maintenance cost. Incurred. During use. And what that requires us to do is to look at type of expenditure. Identifying the characteristics. And accounting treatment. So to do that, let's look at the following. First, we have ordinary. Repairs. And maintenance. The identifying characteristics of this include relatively small. Recurring. Expenditures. That maintain. Normal. Operating condition. The second trait, the second identifying characteristic will be do. Not increase. Productivity. And the third is do not extend. Life beyond. Original estimate. And then for the other one. Which will be called extraordinary. Repairs. And. Extraordinary repairs, replacement and additions. And the identifying characteristics of these are relatively large. Infrequent. Expenditures. Such as. Major overhauls. Or replacements. Of major. Components. This may increase useful life and it may increase productivity or efficiency. And the, the accounting treatment here will be capitalized. And for the green one, ordinary repair and maintenance, it will be expense. So what does this really mean? Well. Let me explain. What this means. Is depreciation expense. And these are depreciation. Is a cost allocation. Process. That matches. Cost of operational. Assets. With periods. Benefited. By their use. And the way it'll do this is through the following. So first, we have. Cost. Which is our balance sheet. And this goes to cost allocation. Which is actually this whole shtick here. And this will go to expense. Which is the income statement. So now that you know this. Let's continue. Depreciation expense. Is depreciation. For current year. To the income statement. And the other one is accumulated. Depreciation. Total depreciation to date of an asset. And this will go to the balance sheet. So let's look at the depreciation methods. The depreciation methods are the straight line method. Units of production. And declining. Balance. Therefore. We're gonna be doing two questions for this section. Let's look at them. First will be CP nine dash three. Okay. CP nine dash three. In other words. Okay. All right, part one B. This is one A, next. One B, two and three. Okay. So this is what we're doing. A bunch of journal entries again. So if you thought we were done with these, you were sorely mistaken. Palmer Cook Music Productions manages to operate two bands. The company then entered into the following transactions during a recent year. These are the following transactions. Prepare the journal entry for each of the above transactions. Okay. So let's separate the transactions into days to make things easier on us. Okay. Day one, purchase a tour bus for eighty thousand by paying twenty thousand cash and signing a sixty thousand note due in two years accounting system. The company records the vehicle distinct from other types of equipment. Okay. So the first one is actually pretty easy. So we have Jan second. And it'll be vehicle. Followed by cash and notes payable. For debit and credit. The vehicle will be eighty thousand as we've just stated. The cash will be twenty thousand. And the notes payable will be sixty thousand. I think that you guys are all getting the point now. B is January eighth. After the bus was used for nearly one week, it was painted with the logos of the two bands at the cost of three hundred and fifty dollars on account. Logo did not increase the lifespan, operating capacity or operating efficiency of the bus, but they thought to be useful in promoting the bands. Therefore, for January eight. This will be. We're going to debit repairs and maintenance expense. And we're going to credit accounts payable. For three hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty. Subsequently, January thirty, we wrote a check for. The amount owed on account for the work completed on January eighth. Okay. So thankfully, what this is, January thirty. Is more balancing. So we have debit accounts payable. And we're crediting cash. And this will be for the same number, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty. Then we go to February zero one. And this will be purchased a new speaker and amplifiers and wrote a check for twelve thousand dollar cost. So it'll be debit equipment. And credit cash for twelve thousand. Pretty simple stuff so far. Now we gotta go to the next one. Which will be. February eighth. Which says what? Pay two hundred and fifty cash for minor repairs to tour bus. Okay. Repairs and maintenance expense. D R C R. It'll be two fifty. And the cash here. Will be two fifty. Then we go to February, to March zero one. And that states paid twenty thousand cash and signed a hundred and ninety thousand dollar five-year note to purchase of small office building and land. Appraisal indicated that the building at land contributed equally to the total price. Therefore. This is gonna force us to do some math. So first of all, we paid twenty thousand in cash and the notes payable long-term is nineteen thou, is a hundred and ninety thousand. Okay. Really? It is a hundred and ninety thousand. So twenty thousand. Plus a hundred and ninety thousand. Will equal twenty-one thousand dollars. Okay? I mean, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then in order to get the first one, which will be land. We do two hundred and ten thousand divided by two, which will equal a hundred and five thousand dollars. And so the buildings. Will equal the same, a hundred and five thousand dollars. Good. The next thing we do is go to the credits. Cause we just did the debit and the credits thankfully are given to us in the question. Credit cash. For twenty thousand dollars. And credit notes payable. For a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And now finally, we go to March thirty-first. What does it say? Paid ninety thousand dollars cash to acquire the goodwill and tangible assets of Chris Smith Incorporated. The fair values of tangible assets were twenty thousand and bad equipment at sixty thousand for recording equipment. Okay. So twenty thousand plus sixty thousand is considered equipment. So credit, I mean debit to equipment. For eighty thousand dollars. And then goodwill. Will be for ten thousand dollars and the reason we are doing ten thousand dollars is because our cash. Was ninety thousand. So ninety thousand minus eighty thousand. Will equal ten thousand. Simple. Good. So now we need to do the other parts. Okay. For the tangible and intangible assets acquired in the preceding preceding transactions. Determine the amount of depreciation and amortization that Polymer Cook Music Productions should report for the quarter ended March thirty first. For convenience, the equipment and vehicles are depreciated the same way. Using the straight line method with a useful life of five years and no residual value. The building is depreciated using the double declining balance method within ten year useful life and residual value of twenty thousand dollars. Calculate depreciation from acquisition date to the end of the quarter. Okay. So in other words, it's asking us to calculate. The vehicle. The equipment. And the building. For partial year. Okay. So to do this, we need to calculate using for vehicles and equipment, the straight line method. So the straight line method here for vehicle. Will be. Cost. Minus residual value. Close parentheses times one divided by useful life. And when you do the math. It'll be eighty thousand. Minus zero, cause there was no residual value. Multiplied by. One divided by five, where does the five come from? Well, the five comes from the fact that. The useful life. Is five years. Where did I get that? Oh, right, it's from the question itself. Straight line method with a useful life of five years. So you gotta read this. And that's where the five comes from. So now. We will put this in a calculator and get four thousand. Yeah. Wait, really? Hold on. That can't be right. Three six. Zero. But that would leave me with sixteen hundred. What am I doing wrong? Oh, right, that's annual, that's annual, okay. So this number here will leave you with sixteen thousand dollars. Okay, I get it. However, we still need it for the partial year. Because this is for annual. For partial. It'll be. The number we got here, sixteen thousand. Times three divided by twelve. So where does the three come from? Well, the three comes from the fact that the report is from March. And March is the third month. My phone was charging, okay, interesting. The third month. And this calculation finally gives us four thousand dollars. So now we go to equipment. Now the equipment is used in the same way. But the equipment is obtained in two months, I believe. Straight line method, five years, determine the amount. Huh. See here. Okay, so the equipment was obtained in March. When was the? Yeah, the equipment itself was obtained in March. No, 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 the vehicles were obtained in March. And land. tangible assets for value, tangible assets, equipment, recording. Wait a minute, something's wrong. Let me, let me read this again. Where did, where do these numbers come from? The partial gear. Okay. So vehicles, where, where does the word vehicle appear? The equipment and vehicles are depreciate the same way using the straight line method with useful life of five years and no residual value. Okay, that's fine. But where does partial year come from? No residual value. So where do vehicles get purchased? Oh. Vehicles are purchased on January second. Steve vehicle from other types of equipment. Okay. So tour bus was obtained in January. And then the equipment was obtained in February, February to March is two months and then January to March is three. Oh, okay, 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 okay. So the reason for this. Is that in January. We got car. Jan to March is three. But in February. We get. Equipment. And then equipment will be Feb. To Mar equals two. So something that I gotta warn you about for this assignments. Is you really gotta pay attention to the dates. Otherwise, you might get screwed over. And not in a fun way. So that's where the two comes from, and the three, cause this was done in January. But in February, we get the equipment, so. Let's do this for equipment. It costs us twelve thousand dollars. Where did twelve thousand come from? From here. Twelve thousand dollars full cost. Times one over five, because that's where it was obtained from. There was no residual value, so we'll just give it at zero, this will give us two, two thousand four hundred. Now this was over the span of two months, so two thousand four hundred. Multiplied by. Two over twelve. Will give us four hundred. But now we have to do buildings and buildings are done using the other calculation. The other calculation being double declining. So double declining. Like this. Will be done via the following formula. Cost minus accumulated. Depreciation. Times. Two. Divided by useful life. And this will be done over partial year. Therefore. For buildings. It will be. The cost of the building. Which is a hundred and five thousand. Which we got from the journal entries. Minus the accumulated depreciation, depreciation which is thankfully still zero. Multiplied by. Two divided by the useful life, which is ten for your building. And that'll give us twenty one thousand dollars. However, now we gotta do it by partial year. We obtained the buildings in March, meaning it's only one month. Twenty one thousand. Times one divided by twelve will equal seventeen fifty. And that is how you answer this question, part two. Specifically. This section that I'm gonna leave inside and then everything else will be erased just to show you what you're actually answering with. All of this extra math. Exists just to explain where we get these numbers from. I know, crazy, right? All those numbers. But that's just how we do it, okay? Everything is done to get other numbers. The craziest long version, I swear. So this is all that's really left. So now we have to calculate the depreciation expense. Okay. So the depreciation expense, which is gonna be for part C. I mean, part three. Prepare a journal entry to record depreciation calculating equipment too, so this is the calculation depreciation for the partial year. Therefore. The journal entry will be on March thirty first. And then it'll be debit and credit. We will have depreciation expense. And this will be the sum of this, the sum of this is sixty one fifty. And now for the credits. It'll be accumulated. Depreciation. For equipment. And then the same thing for vehicle. And the same thing for building. And now we'll put the numbers here. For equipment, it'll be four hundred, for the vehicle, it'll be four thousand. And then for buildings, it'll be seventeen fifty. That's how you would write the journal entry. And now we need to do the next question. P A dash four. Which thankfully isn't very difficult, it's just another journal entry one. Albeit, there's gonna be a lot of journal entries here. So let's do this, shall we? Let me pull up the question. Word close, please, I don't need you open. There we go. The following transactions and adjusting entries were completed by a paper packing. Packaging company called Gravure Graphics International. The company uses straight line depreciation for trucks and other vehicles, double declining balance depreciation for buildings and straight line amortization for patents. Here are the following dates, let me just separate them to make them easier to read through. Yes. Prepare the journal entries required on each of the above dates, no entries required for a transaction event, select no journal entry required in the first account field. Do not round intermediate calculations, okay? So let's look now. Journal entry one. Wow, there are a lot of dates here. I wanna point out that December thirty first has multiple. Journal entries. Okay. So January second, twenty twenty, paid ninety five thousand cash to customer, so one. Let's just do this really quickly. I apparently cannot draw a straight line. This might actually be a problem long term. Close enough. So number one will be January twentieth. And D R C R. It'll be building. And cash. Let's use red. Make everything smaller by one. So for the, the building, it'll be a debit ninety five thousand. And the cash will be ninety five thousand and crediting. So now we do two. Which will be January. See, let's look up what it is first. January third, paid fifty thousand, paid five thousand cash to storage shed erected. Storage shed has estimated life of ten years and residual value of ten thousand, okay? So in other words, we only really care about the first number, the five thousand cash. So it'll be building. Third, twenty twenty. Building. Cash. And it'll be five thousand, five thousand. Now three. April first, twenty twenty, paid thirty eight thousand. Cash to purchase pickup truck for use in business. Truck has an estimated useful life of five years and residual value of eight thousand dollars. Vehicle is to be recorded in truck account. In other words, we have to take um, the cash, cause that's what we paid for it. So the truck will be our, our debit and cash will be credit. So April. First. Twenty twenty. It'll say truck. Cash. Thirty eight thousand dollars, thirty eight thousand dollars. So now we go to four, what's four? May thirteenth. Paid two fifty cash for minor repairs on the pickup trucks upholstery. And it'll be repairs and maintenance expense. And the other one will be cash. And we paid, how much did we pay for it? We paid two hundred and fifty. Five. Whoa, don't open that. July first, twenty twenty, paid twenty thousand cash to purchase patent rights on a new paper bag manufacturing process. Patent is estimated to have a remaining useful life of five years. Okay, so this is gonna be some nonsense, I can already feel it. No, this is actually easy, cause this is July. July. One. It'll be patents. And cash. So the patents will be twenty thousand. And cash twenty thousand. Yeah. December thirty first, record depreciation, amortization. December thirty first record depreciation, amortization of pickup truck, storage shed and patent. Okay, so we're doing three things. First, depreciation expense. What the hell is the depreciation expense? Well. The depreciation expense seems to be a number. But how do we calculate the number? For December thirty first, what's the depreciation expense? It will be two four five zero zero. Ha. Is it given in the question? No, it's not. Two four five zero zero. Where do I get that number from? I'm not sure. Where do I just get two thousand from? On the, on the just a random number? This is the question we're currently doing. Record all those numbers. Okay, sure. Mm-hmm. You know what? First, we gotta get the other numbers then. So we get these other numbers. We have the depreciation expense of the truck. Okay. The residual value is eight thousand of the truck. So where does four five hundred come from? Cash to purchase storage shed components. To have storage shed erected, storage shed has residual value of ten K. Uh-huh. Because the thing is. The December thirty first twenty twenty one. The journal entry. December thirty first twenty twenty. Has a journal entry of the following. It'll be depreciation expense. And then for the other one in the cred, in the debit, it's going to be amortization expense. Okay. That's fine. And then the credits will be accumulated. Depreciation. For building. And accumulated depreciation for truck. And then we need accumulated. Amortization. Because I know what it looks like. I'm just trying to figure out where I get the values from. So it says that for the patent. For the patent itself, which is the amortization. I can calculate it using the following. It'll be twenty thousand. Times. One over five. Times six over twelve. And we put that in a calculator, that'll give us two thousand. On credit. Then for the truck. It'll be thirty eight thousand. Minus eight thousand, the eight thousand comes from the truck question. Times useful lifespan of five years. Times. Nine over twelve, because we got it in March and now it's currently December. End of March, I believe, or do you get it in April? Let me check. April, so that's uh the fourth, the fourth month, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. To December. So that's nine over twelve. You put that together and you're left with. The numbers two, no, not two thousand. You're left with four thousand five hundred. Then for building. For building, we have the following. Ninety five thousand. Which comes from. The question itself, cash. Minus the five thousand to have the shed erected. Multiplied by. My apologies. Minus a little bit more, minus. Twenty thousand? I don't think so. Something's wrong. I was right. It's plus five thousand. Minus twenty thousand. Okay. But why? Oh no, I'm just way off apparently. Minus two thousand. Actually, there isn't even a minus here. This is the answer. The twenty thousand is the answer we get. What am I doing? Minus zero. There we go. Times two over twelve. And that'll equal twenty thousand. The two over twelve comes from the fact that. It was acquired in. January second? Wait, 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 wait. What was the useful life? Estimated useful life of ten years. Oh, but we, this is gonna be the second year then? I am so confused. Where does the two ten come from? Depreciation for other vehicles, double declining balance depreciation and buildings, a straight line amortization for patients. Okay. So let's think about this for a second. The, the building. Is ninety five thousand cash. Plus five thousand cash, which is what we pay to have the storage shed erected. That's ten thousand. Where does two over ten come from? No, seriously, where does two over ten come from? Two over ten, where does that come from? Residual value of ten K. But that doesn't tell me anything. January second paid cash. Oh, is a declining balance. This is double declining balance. What am I doing? So it'll be two over number of years. So the two just comes from the formula itself. Declining balance is the, is the formula, two over years of useful, ten years useful. Okay. So this is just from formula. And that'll give us twenty thousand dollars. Good. But then what about the expense? How come there's two thousand amortization expense? Well, that's because accumulated amortization. Is two thousand. And since amortization is going to be the sum. No, amortization expense is here, but then depreciation is going to be the sum of these two. So it'll be twenty four thousand five hundred. And that's how you would write that one. For December thirty first twenty twenty. Oh my goodness, all of that just to write. A one journal entry. Unbelievable. Unbelievable indeed. But we're not done, so let's keep going. Unbelievable. Because it's the formula, right? It's in the formula. When you're doing what is called. Double. Decline. Bow. The formula is going to be. The other thing. Divided by two, so it'll be two over useful year. Got it. Cause this is double declining. Right. Right. Sorry, I was, I was just uh thinking about how that works. So now the next one we do. Is going to be for June thirtieth. Wow, June thirtieth. Seven. June thirty. And the numbers here are. The following. No, that's not what I meant to do. Close this. Why did that open? I don't know. Sold the pickup truck for thirty three thousand cash recorded depreciation on truck prior to recording its disposal. Wait a minute, that's easy. Prior to recording disposal. Okay, 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 okay. So first. Cash. We're gonna debit that for thirty three thousand dollars. And now we need the accumulated depreciation on the truck. But at this point, it's been a lot longer. Yeah, yeah. So the accumulated depreciation truck this time. Same numbers, so thirty eight thousand. Minus. Eight thousand. Multiplied by one over five, cause it's a lifespan. Multiplied by the annual, so it's been six months at that point. And that will give us three thousand. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, that's wrong. Something is definitely wrong. Cause that only gives us three thousand. Uh-huh. Hmm. I don't know. Because we know for a fact. That. Depreciation for a truck. Be the following. We know the truck costs eight thousand, three thousand eight hundred, I mean thirty eight thousand. So there are two numbers here that go here. That'll be accumulated. Depreciation buildings. And the other one will be gain on disposal. So the accumulated de- depreciation of the truck. Somehow. Ends up being seven thousand five hundred. And the gain in disposal. Is two thousand five hundred. Okay, that makes sense, but why? Why do these two numbers exist here? Seven thousand five hundred and two thousand. Five hundred. Because that's ten thousand. Okay, so how do I get ten thousand? Mm-hmm. Thirty thousand cash. Where did the ten thousand come from? Oh, cause the residual value was ten thousand. Ten years of residual life value, ten thousand. Okay. But that doesn't tell me anything, cause that's for the pickup truck. The residual value is eight K. Value is recorded in the truck account. Oh, the ten thousand is for the shed. Accumulated depreciation buildings. Uh-huh. I. I don't get it. Accumulated depreciation on the truck. Is seven thousand five hundred. They should say truck. But where does the seven thousand five hundred come from? Cause the depreciation expense equipment is three thousand. Oh. Oh, okay, now I get it. So we have the following, right? It'll be depreciation. Expense. Equipment truck. Will be equal to. Thirty eight thousand minus eight thousand. Times one over five times six over twelve. And that'll be three thousand. Three thousand plus four five zero zero gets me this number here. So we take these numbers. Thirty three thousand, that'll give us four thousand five, forty thousand five hundred. So we just need to add. Depreciation truck gain is a subtraction. This one we can just get from the following calculation. Three three zero zero zero. Plus seven five zero zero minus three eight zero zero zero. And that'll equal to five zero zero zero, I mean two five zero zero. There is no third zero. So that's how you'll get that number. Sorry, it's just that this, these are a bit more complicated than in the first one. So if you see me thinking through it a little bit harder, that's because the questions are harder. But at the end of the day. As long as you can figure out the method. It's not too bad. And now we have to do the December ones. Okay, December, December stuff. So there's gonna be four December calculations. Record depreciation of a storage shed. Record the patent amortization after recording the patent amortization determined the patent was impaired and wrote off its remaining book value. Wrote down book value to zero. That's all it says? That's all it is? Okay. Okay. And that can be solved. This can definitely be solved. Yep. Let's do this. Now, for the sake of simplicity and for the sake of neatness. We're gonna write all of this. In one area. So there's gonna be nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Good, cause all of these are going to be December thirty first. Twenty twenty one. Debit, credit. Debit, credit. So let's start with nine. First. What is it actually asking us to look for? It's asking us to look for the recorded depreciation on the storage shed. So it's looking for buildings. So in other words, depreciation expense. And then accumulated depreciation buildings. And that'll be. Some value. We're gonna calculate all the values later. I just need to get the journal entries ready. The next one will be amortization expense. Over accumulated amortization. The eleventh one will be accumulated amortization. Over patents. And the last one will be impairment loss. Over patents. Okay, good. So now let's do this. Record the patent amortization after record the patent amortization determined the patent has impaired and wrote off its remaining book value. Wrote down book value to zero. Got it. So what does this really mean? Well, it means we're gonna be doing a Well, it means we're gonna be doing a lot of painy ass calculations. Let's do this. So for buildings. It's going to be. Ninety-five thousand. Plus five thousand. Multiplied by two over ten. And that'll be sixteen thousand. Good. Then we have for patent amortization. And that will be. For the truck. Patent amortization for the. No, not even for the truck, it's just patent amortization. What am I talking about? This one will be for straight line for a full year. So it'll be twenty thousand. Times one over five. Equalling to four thousand. Then. We do the accumulated amortization and impairment loss. This requires patent book value. And this will be. Twenty thousand. Minus. Accumulated amortization. Which is six thousand. Minus two thousand. Plus four thousand. And that'll equal fourteen thousand. So that'll be for here. It'll be. Fourteen thousand. Fourteen thousand. And then the six thousand. Comes from twenty thousand minus fourteen thousand, so six thousand debit, six thousand credit. And that's how you'll do. These journal entries. Oh my goodness. There's still two more chapters left. Unbelievable. Please tell me these ones aren't too bad. Okay, so we have three questions for this one. Sure. Therefore, I'm going to give some examples. We'll work on those and then we'll do the homework ones. So the next one is going to be the following stuff. Liabilities. Will this finally be the longest study session? I don't know, maybe. So we're gonna be talking about accrued payroll. So what are payroll deductions? Payroll reductions, I mean payroll deductions are. Either. Required. By law. Or voluntary. Request. By. Employees. And create. A current. Liability. For the company. Examples. Include. Income DUCs. FIC attacks. And other deductions. Such as. Donation. Union dues. Et cetera. So now let's look at some bonds. Yeah, we're gonna be looking at some bonds now. Sure. This has to do with bond issues at face value. General Mills receives a hundred thousand dollars cash in exchange for issuing a hundred bonds. At their one thousand dollar face value, so the bonds are issued at total face value one hundred times one thousand equals a hundred thousand. So in other words. When we look at our accounting equation, assets. Equal liabilities. Plus stock. Holders. Equity. We have cash. Is plus a hundred thousand. And liabilities, bonds payable. Will plus a hundred thousand. To record the general entry. Will have cash be a hundred K. Bond payable. Will be a hundred K. Now we're gonna look at bonds issued at a premium. General Mills issues a hundred of its thousand dollar bonds at a price of a hundred and seven point two six percent. Of face value, the company will receive. Hundred and seven thousand two hundred and sixty. So how does that work? Easy.
Also easy.
So we look back at our accounting equations, assets equals liability plus stockholders equity. We have cash as plus a hundred and seven thousand two hundred and sixty. And then liabilities will be bonds. Payable. Which will be plus a hundred thousand. Premium on. Bonds payable. Plus seven thousand two hundred and sixty. Which when put on a record. Will be cash. Bonds payable. And premium. On bonds payable. And that'll be one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and sixty. Bonds payable will be a hundred thousand. And premium will be seven thousand two hundred and sixty. Now we do bonds issued at a discount. General Mills received ninety-three thousand three hundred and seventy-six for bonds with a total face value of a hundred thousand. The cash equivalent amount is ninety-three thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Which represents the liability of the date. These bonds are issued at a discount because the cash received is less than the face value of the bonds. Okay. So what exactly does that mean? Well, assets. Equal liabilities. Plus stockholders. Equity. We have cash. Plus nine three three seven six. Liabilities will be bonds payable. Plus a hundred thousand. And then discount. On bonds payable. And that'll be. Plus X L. Negative six six two four. So to record this. On a journa- on a journal entry. Cash. Discount. On bonds payable. And then finally we bonds payable here. So it'll be ninety-three thousand three hundred and seventy-six. Six thousand six hundred and twenty-four. And over here it'll be a hundred thousand. So now that we know all the journal entries. Let's get on to three questions. My goodness, this is gonna take forever, isn't it? Yep. Absolutely, this is gonna take forever. Kirk Company completed the following transactions. The annual accounting period ends December thirty-first. These are all the transactions that they made. Okay. For each list. We don't need to do the second one. For each list. Transaction and related adjusting entry indicate amounts, amounts and effects of the accounting. Okay. Indicate the accounts, amounts and effects. Sure. Sure, 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 sure. So what is asking us to do? Is create. Journal entries, not journal entries, it asks us to place them on the accounting equation. So let's look at all the dates. Okay, so date. It'll be. Jan eighth, Jan seventeen. April. One, June third. July fifth. July thirty-one. December. Twenty, December twenty. December thirty-one. December thirty-one. And December thirty-one. And now we'll need this for assets. Which will be named here. Along with how much they're worth. Okay, time to hold things like a whiteboard pencil. Okay. And the amount goes here. Equals. Liabilities. Which will be. The following. Then we have stockholder equity. Which will be the following numbers here. Plus sign. So for January eighth, what do we got? Well, apparently we got a lot. First, let's actually separate them so that it's easier to tell where go- what goes where. Because otherwise what's going to happen is we're going to run into multiple overlaps and we don't want that. Adminedly, this kind of. Decoration seems a bit pointless, but trust me when I say that. By doing this, it'll be even easier to read everything. There's a reason we use colors and don't just keep a white background and do everything by hand. Because it would be nightmarish to do so. I remember back when we used to do this on a laptop. And on the laptop, the way that worked was. The screen would flash black. Every time I wrote anything. So. Thankfully, the recording software never picked it up, but if some, if I was epileptic, this would be impossible to record. Up until episode thirty, give or take. Okay. I think now I have separated them. So January eighth. Asks us to. Purchase merchandise, purchase merchandise on account cost of fourteen thousand to assume perpetual inventory system. So in other words, we, uh, inventory. Yeah, inventory. And it'll be accounts payable. And it'll be fourteen thousand dollars. Now we go to the next one. Paid for January eighth purchase. Some of the words cash. And accounts payable. Which will be negative fourteen thousand. Cause we're finally paying for it. Then April first. Received forty thousand from National Bank after signing a twelve month six percent promissory note. Okay. So it'll be. Cash. And here it's notes payable. And it'll be forty K. Then we go to June third. Which says purchase merchandise on account at cost of eighteen thousand. So in other words, purchasing merchandise, we're getting inventory. And this is an a-. An accounts payable again. And this will be for eighteen thousand like before. Then we gotta do July first. Which states. I mean July fifth, my bad. Paid for June purchase, so in other words. Inventory, I mean, this is because we're paying for it, it's cash. Negative eighteen K. Accounts payable. Negative eighteen K. July thirty-first says. Rented out a small office building owned by the EZ Kirk Company collected six months rent in advance amounting to six thousand dollars. So it'll be cash. And deferred revenue. And this will be six thousand. Six thousand. For December twentieth. Collected a hundred dollar cash on the account from a customer. So cash. Accounts receivable. It'll be a hundred. Negative a hundred. Now we go to December thirty-first. Which says. Determine the wages of sixty-five thou- six thousand five hundred were earned but not paid in December thirty-first, you know payroll. So in other words, salaries. And wages payable. Salaries. And wages expense. These will be six thousand five hundred. Six thousand five hundred. Adjusted the accounts at end of year relating to interest. Okay, that's fine. So to do the interest payable. And interest expense. We have to calculate it. Interest payable. Will equal. Forty thousand. Times. Zero point zero six, cause we signed a six. Zero point zero six, cause we signed a six percent promissory note. Times nine over twelve, cause we did it on the fourth month, four. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, I just counted off nine numbers. And that'll give us eighteen thousand. Also, these ones should be negative. I mean eighteen hundred. And then for deferred revenue. This will be six thousand. Times five over six months. Which will equal five thousand. So five thousand. Five thousand. Oh, I actually need to write, well, I'm actually entering in, my bad. So we're entering here is deferred revenue. And that's how you'll do this question. My goodness, these are so long. I don't. Okay. Let's do this. Thankfully, the next question isn't too hard, but something like this, I know this is gonna be what kills people's grades on the exam, I can already sense it. Yeah. I can already feel it. So now we gotta do the next question, which thankfully isn't as hard of a question. McLloyd Company completed salaries and wages payroll from March, the payroll provided the following details, salaries, wages earned, employee withheld, taxes, income. FICA taxes withheld and unemployed taxes for the following numbers. Considering both employee and employer payroll taxes, use the preceding information to calculate the total labor cost for the company of March, sure. Sure, that one's gonna be easy. Let me explain why it's gonna be easy. So it's asking for total labor cost. Well, we know. That gross salary, so sal. And wages earned. Is equal to four hundred thousand. We know that. FICA. Tax withheld is equal to. Twenty-eight thousand, six hundred. And we know that unemployment tax. Is equal to. Two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. So if you take the sum of these, you will get. Four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So now we have to do some journal entries. Okay? Prepare the journal entry to record payroll for March, including employee deductions but excluding payroll taxes. Court employers FICA taxes and unemployment taxes. Sure. Sure, 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 sure. So thankfully, this is actually isn't very hard. In fact. Let's even make it pretty. Debit, credit. Number one. Date. Journal, general, general. Journal. So now we have all this information. Let's get to work and also two will be down here. So one. We have, uh, salaries and wages expense, this will be March thirty-first. Salaries and wages expense. Is over debiting and then we're crediting withheld. Income tax payable. And cash. So we know. From the question itself. That. Our salaries and wages earned are forty thousand. Four hundred thousand, my bad. Our salaries and wages expense is four hundred thousand. Withheld income tax is. Three thousand. Oh, I also need to put FICA. FICA payable. We know that FICA payable. Is twenty-eight, six hundred. And we know that, uh, the. The withheld income tax payable is going to be thirty-seven thousand dollars. But what about cash? Well, we know that it's going to be the difference between this and these two. So cash is equal to three hundred and thirty-four. Thousand, four hundred dollars. Good. Now let's do the next journal entry. Also for March thirty-first. Is there someone outside? I don't even know what's making that noise, that's kinda crazy. Anyways, so we're going to be debiting the payroll tax expense. And we're gonna be crediting unemployment. Tax payable. And FICA payable. So payroll tax expense is going to be thirty-one thousand, three hundred, eight hun- eighty. And payroll tax expense comes from. The sum of the other two. It's gonna be the sum. Of twenty-eight. Oh my bad, this is actually the one. So it's gonna be twenty-seven. Eighty. And this one here will be twenty-eight, six hundred. The sum of these two will give you this number, that's how you get it. Okay. Oh my goodness. This is, uh, grueling, this is actually grueling, how much I have to do for one question. Okay. Thank goodness, it's another journal entry. On January first. Innovative Solutions Incorporated issued two hundred thousand dollars in bonds at face value. Bonds have stated interest rate of six percent, bonds mature in ten years and pay interest once per year on December thirty-first. Okay. Prepare journal entries to record the bond issuance, interest payment on thirty-first, early retirement of the bonds. And assume bonds were retired immediately after the first interest payment at the quoted price of a hundred and one. If no entries required for transaction event, select no journal entry required in the first account field. Sure, 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 sure. Now, I wanna point out. That this is kinda scummily written because that one hundred and one is a percentage. But it doesn't tell you that. So let's do this. Better. So we start with January one. And what exactly are we doing, what we're doing? Prepare journal entries for issued bond issuance, okay, bond issuance, interest payment on December thirty-first, okay? And early term of bonds, okay, so this is one, two and three, so. To record the bond issuance. It's, uh, cash. And bonds payable. And we know that the cash is gonna be two hundred thousand. Debit, credit. So now we're gonna be going over to December. Thirty-first. Interest payment on December thirty-first, early retirement of the bonds, so in other words. We gotta calculate interest expense. Thankfully, we know that it is a six percent. And the bond matures in, uh, ten years. But annually, it takes a whole year because January to December is twelve months. Yeah. Okay, so interest expense. And cash. To calculate interest expense, let's do it. It'll equal. Two hundred thousand. Times zero point six. Times one, because twelve over twelve is equal to one. Twelve because January to December is twelve months. And that'll give me twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars. I need a darker color. I should use white for now. And then for the second, for the second one on December thirty-first. What are we looking for? Assume the bonds retire immediately after the first interest payment at the. Oh, that was interest payment, so now we do the early retirement of bonds. Okay, so what if we, what if the bonds were done early? Sure. So for the early retirement of the bonds, we have to do the following interaction, so it'd be bonds payable. It'll be loss. On bond retirement. And then cash. So to calculate cash. That'll be. Two hundred thousand times one point zero one. And that'll equal two zero, two zero, zero, zero. Yeah, so we know that the bonds payable is two hundred thousand. And the cash is two oh, two zero, 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 meaning that loss on bond retirement is two thousand dollars. Yay. No. We have one more left. Three questions left. Those being. Stock. Holders. Equity. Yes. So now. Let's answer some questions, right? Definitely, let's answer some basic questions. Give it a second. National Beverage issued a hundred thousand shares of zero point zero one par value common stock for twenty dollars per share. Okay. So what does that mean? So first. Let's do some math. We're using the. The accounting equation again. So the accounting equation. Asks us to calculate assets and cash. Well, we got the following. A hundred thousand. Times twenty will be equal to two million. We know that the common stock. Will be equal to a hundred thousand. Times zero point zero one. Which will be equal to. Plus one thousand. Additional paid in capital. Will be equal to the difference between two a million and a hundred thousand, it should be one million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And then to record this. It'll look like this, cash. Common stock. And additional paid in capital. Should be two hundred. Thousand, two million, about two million. Common stock is one thousand and then a hundred and, one million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Yeah. So now we do the next one. The repurchase of a stock. National Beverage required. Reacquired fifty thousand shares of its common stock at twenty-five dollars per share. Alright. Let's answer the question. First. We gotta do some math, right, fifty thousand. Times twenty-five is going to equal. One, two, five, zero, 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 but since we're reacquiring it, meaning we're buying it back, we're actually losing that much. So in other words. This is cash, it's our assets. Equal liabilities. Plus stockholders equity. And that'll be a treasury stock. That'll be plus X S E. Negative one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. And then when you record it, you'll do treasury stock. Over cash. That'll be one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Over one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, one more journal entry and then we can do the practice questions. There's gonna be three practice questions left and by goodness, these are going to be long. Very long, but very important. I know it seems like I'm losing all of my enthusiasm for this. I'm not, I'm just really tired. Okay. Okay, okay, okay. So this is another reissuance of treasury stock. This case of reissued five thousand shares of treasury stock at twenty-eight dollars per share, what does that mean? So what exactly does that mean, well, guys? Well, that means we gotta do some multiplication again, five thousand times twenty-eight will be equal to four hundred and forty thousand. So assets equal liability plus stockholder equity. Will be cash. Four zero, 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 and then stockholder equity be, uh. Treasury s- stock. Minus X E plus one, two, five, zero, 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 which we got from the previous question. And. Additional. Paid in capital, which is going to be plus fifteen, cause that's the difference. So in other words, when we record it, it'll be cash. Treasury stock. And additional paid in capital. Should be four, hundred and forty thousand, hundred and twenty-five thousand. And fifteen thousand. Should be four, hundred and forty thousand, hundred and twenty five thousand, and fifteen thousand. Okay. Now that you know how to do liabilities and stockholder equity. Which you would think they would, you know, make it a thing sooner, but apparently not. Let's answer some questions. Yay. How does uh Onu Apaseli do it, like? Yeah, like the most dead yay of all time, okay. The Expand Operations Aragon. Consulting issued a thousand shares of previously unissued common stock with a par value of one dollar, the price for the stock was fifty dollars per share. Okay. We gotta make a table indicating amount, account, and direction. Sure. So assets equal liability plus stockholders equity. Yeah, oh, now we're using the accounting equation, I just realized that, oh, all, after everything we've been through, we finally using this thing. Cash. Five thousand. Fifty thousand, my apologies, because it is. One thousand. Times fifty. And then common stock will be one thousand times one. Because the one thousand is being sold for one dollar as the par value. So that means here, common stock. Is equal to one thousand. And then additional paid in capital will be equal, this is the common stock. Will be equal to the difference, which is forty nine thousand dollars. Yes. Yes. Absolutely everything, I love this. Prepare the journal entry for the stock issuance, so pretend you still see that table in front of you, cuz I hope you all wrote it down. One, cash, additional paid in capital. Commons. Stock. Common stock. Debit, credit, fifty thousand. Forty nine thousand, one thousand. So now it says. What if the par value was two dollar? Well, it's easy. For the case of the table, it would still be cash, five thousand, fifty thousand. Equal liability plus S E, S E would be common stock, two thousand. Additional paid in capital. Forty eight, that was a terrible eight. Forty eight thousand. And so when we look at it from the new equation, all we do is change these two. And that also answers D. Okay. Next one. There's only two questions left. Netpass Company has three hundred thousand shares of common stock authorized, two hundred and seventy thousand shares issued, and a hundred thousand shares of treasury stock. Company's board directors declares a dividend of one dollar per share of common stock, what is the total amount of the dividend that will be paid? Okay, so in other words, it's asking us for some basic numbers thankfully. So dividend. Amount. To be paid. Ah, no, I got spam again. You know what? Why don't you guys listen to the spam while I record this? Anyway, so the divisible amount to be paid. Uh, it'll be shares outstanding, yeah, exactly, yes, spam, you all even know anything about me, whatever. So dividend amount to be paid will be shares outstanding. Times the dividend rate. And when looking at the question. Shares outstanding is. This many, two hundred and seventy thousand. Shares issued minus. With a hundred thousand of treasury stock. Multiplied by the dividend rate, which is one dollar. And that will give us a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And now for the final question. This nonsense. Colliers Incorporated has a hundred thousand shares of accumulated preferred stock outstanding, and the preferred stock pays dividends in the amount of two dollars per share, but. Because of cash flow problems, company did not pay dividends last year. Board of directors plans to pay dividends in the amount of six hundred thousand this year, what amount will go to preferred scholar, stock ship, and how much will be available for common stock dividends? Well, you're paying for two dollars per share, okay? It'll be a hundred thousand times two, will be twenty thou- two hundred thousand, you know, let me just write it down. Cuz this is honestly really easy, so let's put this way. Stock outstanding. Is equal to. Hundred thousand shares. First stock dividend pays amount two dollars per share, cuz of cash flow problem, company not paying any dividends last year, board directors plans the dividend amount of six hundred thousand. Okay. So. First stock pays dividends, cash flow problem, company not paid. The dividends last year, board directors paid different amount. So in other words, because they didn't pay the dividends last year, only the preferred got it. Okay. In other words, if we look at the past year. We have two hundred thousand, because it is at uh two dollars per share. And then current year. Will equal two hundred thousand. That will go to preferred. Stockholders. Which is going to be four hundred thousand, but given that there is a total of six hundred thousand. Total dividends. The common, uh, common stock dividend. Is a difference, so four hundred thousand. My, six hundred thousand minus four thousand is two hundred thousand. So in other words, four hundred thousand will go to preferred stockholders, and two hundred thousand will go to the common stockholders. We did it! That's every question! I'm so happy. Do your best on your exam, guys. I believe in you.